I now call the December 20th, 2016 Regular Council Meeting to order. Would council members please denote your presence by pressing your yes switch?
All council members are present.
Thank you. Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable television, Channel 192. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the December 6th, 2016 Regular Council Meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on December 16th, 2016.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Humphrey. Corrections?
I have a correction.
Yes?
I think it's just a simple typo in the first and second paragraphs of the minutes there. It says I am both present and absent, and I was absent for last meeting.
I think that's a little more than a Scrivener's error. Your presence is duly noted or lack thereof. So, can we amend that to reflect that Councilman Miller was not present at that meeting? Any more corrections? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the December 20th Bills and Claims as audited by City Manager McDonald.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Councilman Haley, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now address the main business portion of the meeting. Council carries out business by three types of action: by ordinance, resolution, and minute action. Ordinances require three readings and votes, whereas the other items are passed by one. Ordinances create or modify local law, whereas resolutions and minute actions provide for the council to carry out its business. These various actions have different publication and public hearing requirements. Items may be considered by consent or not consent. Consent items are typically routine and will not be discussed by this council, and there is process with public as well as this council to pull an item from consent for that public discussion. Council will now hold previously scheduled public hearings for the purpose of obtaining public input. Public hearings are held for items such as annexations, liquor license transactions, passage of the budget, and zone changes. The city attorney will present applicable exhibits for the issue, and the city manager will give council a report. Members of the audience will then be asked either to speak in favor or in opposition to the issue, and then council will act upon it if necessary. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the vacation and replat creating Fairgrounds Home Edition. City Attorney Lubin, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. There are two exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Liz Becker to V.H. McDonald, that document dated December 12th, 2016. And exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated December 1st, 2016.
Thank you. City Manager McDonald, your report, please.
Your Honor, Fairgrounds Plaza Incorporated has applied to replat a 5.57 acre property to create the Fairgrounds Home Edition located at the corner of Casper Street and Fairgrounds Road. The subject property is Zone C2, general commercial, and is currently undeveloped. The replat is for the development of twin homes and multifamily residential housing primarily designed for seniors. The proposed replat also creates a loop street between Fairgrounds Road and Casper Street. There is a complexity in this item in that the Casper Municipal Code specifies residential blocks shall not exceed 750 feet in length. This replat, as submitted, includes a street of 818 feet in length, and normally this block would require, this size of block would require a mid-block street. The plan submitted does not reflect the required mid-block street, but reflects a pathway that the developer wishes to put in in lieu of the street. Craig Collins, the city planner, will explain the process and the options passed along to council to decide tonight about which way to go with this proposed replat.
You want him to do that now?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Collins, welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of council. Craig Collins, 200 North David. The, I'm sorry for the confusion on this. It is, it is very confusing. The, as the city manager explained, the municipal code has a requirement that no block, residential block, can be over 750 feet, and the council has the ability to waive that requirement. So that's why you're listening to this request tonight. The applicant basically would like to do the pathway in lieu of the street. The reason for that is because the property to the east is kind of an unknown. We don't know, the property's up for sale by the school district. We don't know what that property's going to end up being, whether it will be reutilized as it's built or could be scraped clean in a residential subdivision. Typically, we like to see blocks under 500 feet. Anything over 500 feet requires a mid-block pedestrian easement, and as the city manager explained, anything over 750 feet is not permitted unless you have special permission from council.
Okay. Questions, comments for Craig? Yes, Charlie, go ahead.
Craig, could you talk a little bit about the reasoning and what happens when streets get too long and the practical problems that result?
Absolutely. The block length requirement is relatively new. It's probably within the last five years or so, and it only affects residential neighborhoods for now. The reason for that is when you have a lack of streets, you have traffic problems. Having more streets dissipates the traffic, that's one benefit. It also provides multiple ways in and out of an area, so you don't get areas, for instance, if you have a water line or something like that that blows up or an accident, you're not restricted, you have another way to get into the area. And one of the other benefits is utility redundancy, so having multiple utility services coming from different directions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes? Councilman Haley.
Thank you. Just curious, if a mid-block street was inserted into this plat, would it be between Fairgrounds Road and Spur Place, or where would it be proposed to be inserted?
Your Honor, we're somewhat flexible on that. However, I think everybody recognizes that the only place that it could really go is on the east side where that highlighted pedestrian easement is now. If it needed to shift one way or the other, up or down, I don't think anybody'd have any heartburn over that, and that would probably be dictated by the number of lots they would have to lose and how it would lay out with the twin homes.
Follow-up. So that would be a T intersection rather than a cross intersection?
Correct.
And the street would be put in just for the extent of the lot?
Correct. It would be similar when we build a new subdivision on the edge of town where it's prairie beyond. We leave a stub street beyond for future access.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
So Craig, what happens with Lot 21 and 22? Are they both still viable with this, or does the developer lose an opportunity to develop one of these lots?
Most likely, the developer would lose probably both lots. The minimum right-of-way width is 50 feet, so I'm guessing he'd probably adjust the lots down the line to make up some part of it, but at least one or two lots would probably go away.
And there's no way that this could be located in such a way that it simply took up one complete lot so that only one lot would be lost?
Sure. I can't read the, it looks like 37 feet is the lot width. Is that correct?
Looks like 42.
42? Oh, on those two lots?
Yeah.
Seeing that the minimum right-of-way width in the city is 50 feet, no?
So they're both, they're both shot?
Well, as I stated, you could maybe take one out and then readjust the lot lines down the line to pick up the extra few feet, but I would probably defer to the applicant's engineer on that.
Because the others are 37, so you can do 37, that's within code.
Correct, but I'm not sure going 35 in order to make up those feet would accommodate what they're wanting to build.
Okay. Any more questions for Craig? I have one. In the packet, it was mentioned that there were a couple of options. Option one is street, and option two is path. Would you please explain the background of the merits and problems with both of those options?
Well, I think they each have merit, and I'm glad I'm not sitting where you all are tonight because I can see both sides of this argument. The Planning Commission initially, there was a recommendation to do option two, which is just the pathway, and forego the street. However, that motion did not garner enough votes to pass, so then they went on and passed it with basically option one, which is put the street in. However, the concern, the reason that the council's seeing both those options is because they were concerned that should the applicant be successful in getting the street waived, they didn't want to lose the pathway option. So that's why it's somewhat confusing, but they want, the direction from Planning Commission was one or the other. They didn't want to lose both.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I assume that we don't know what's going to be going to the east of this. This property is on the block, so to speak.
Correct, it's up for sale, and none of us has a crystal ball, unfortunately.
Yeah, well, whether it would be, whether it would be developed as a commercial property or changed some data residential, walkability still needs to remain an issue. A street certainly has more walkability, but less friendly walkability than a pathway. So I guess as a matter of, since we don't know what's going to happen there, I guess I'd like to have us look at it a little bit in light of walkability somewhere down the road.
Right, and I don't know if this is politically correct or expedient, but I don't see a problem with the developers having options here. I don't see a problem with them hedging their bets and waiting for a decision so that they know, because the decision hasn't been made and there is uncertainty. That's my personal position. Any more questions or comments?
I think the city attorney had a question.
Yes?
I would just suggest that discussion on the issue be reserved for your discussion.
Right. We got off track.
A little bit.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Any more questions directed to Craig Collins? Okay, thank you. And the reason that City Attorney Lubin mentioned that is for fairness of people who may want to speak out. We don't want to preempt you. So, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issues involving the Fairgrounds Home Edition, please approach select term. Welcome, sir.
Mayor, council members. My name's Steve Grimshaw, 39 East First Street in Sheridan. I am the owner of the property and the applicant for the replat of this site. In regards to the street length, we have probably, this is version number eight or 10, we've manipulated this site to the nines to try and maximize every square foot to do the twin home lots as well as the larger multifamily lot. I'm the owner, builder, developer. Buck starts and stops with me. As far as the property to the east, the topography doesn't really warrant a street to go into that property, and for the simple fact that it's owned by the school district, we don't know what the outcome of that development parcel is going to be. It's kind of senseless to draw and place a developed road for 80 feet into that site without any control whatsoever on that property. There is a 60-foot right-of-way easement coming off of the road directly to the south of the school site, into that school site, so there is adequate access into it for future development, in whatever manner it may be. As far as the street length, you know, the additional, the additional length is 60 feet or something like that from the maximum 750 feet allowed. Like I say, we have manipulated this and designed it in every possible way in order to try and minimize any heartburn on my part as the developer of the property in putting an additional 50-foot road directly across the center of the property or something, and that reduces the maximum amount of lots that I can get in there. The twin homes, I built a project in Sheridan called Blue Sky Court. If anybody wants to ever Google Earth that, they can see what the results of this one here will be. That's been six or seven years ago. It's matured beautifully. When I build, everything's done 100% to include landscaping and sprinkler systems. I'm open for any questions or discussions.
Questions or comments for Steve Grimshaw, first, Councilman Johnson.
Was there any street length issues with the Sheridan property?
No. That was a 24-unit twin home project. The depth of the street was a lot shorter. It has a cul-de-sac at the end of it. We looked at cul-de-sacs here on this side, and it just, you know, in our discussions with the fire department and the emergency services, nobody's had any issues with the street length in the addition to the 750 feet allowable. And, you know, with Craig Collins and the city staff, worked with them ad nauseam to try and mitigate this single issue, and the street path, or the walking path going to the east, whether or not that is going to be designated in the most appropriate area for the development to the east, God only knows. I'm planning on starting construction as soon as the plat's completed, or the approval's completed, we'll, as soon as, you know, if you guys approve it tonight, then I'll instruct the engineers to move forward with the infrastructure design and development so we can get started on the moving dirt, probably in the end of February, first part of March.
Okay. Councilman Powell.
Mr. Grimshaw, I want to start by expressing my appreciation for you moving forward with this project. This is a piece of property that's stood vacant for many, many years, and this is an excellent example of infill development and adding housing units to our stock, which I appreciate your confidence in our community during this downturn to take this project on. Have you done any calculations on how either, how the pathway and the street would affect your, your business plan, and how many units would you be able to develop, and would the pathway have less of an impact than the street in terms of how many units you could put on this property?
Yes. When we, we was able to adjust the individual twin home lots down in order to accommodate the 15-foot easement that goes through to the east, in doing a 50-foot right-of-way, then of course we'd lose a full two lots, which, you know, it's not something that I'd prefer to do, especially going to nowhere.
So you would lose zero lots with the pathway?
I lose zero lots with the pathway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Grimshaw, I understand you mentioned there's a 60-foot right-of-way to the southern edge of this current school property?
That is correct.
Would it be conceivable that you could look, instead of this location for the pathway, could it move down to intercept that right-of-way? I mean, I know we don't have a map that shows that, but I'm sure you've seen it.
If you look at, if you zoom in to the squared off area to the top right of that plat, and then move to your right, further, 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 okay? Now zoom in on that, on that brokerage plaza, you see where CY Avenue is.
Okay.
And then, right at the two As in the brokerage in the plaza, that there is this 60-foot easement for that street. I don't remember what it's called. You, Brad? But it is a plat of dedicated easement onto that property. Central Drive, that is Central Drive, that's the extension of Central Drive. So that area, of course, is not even a budding, that easement there is not a budding my property at all, so it wouldn't be conducive.
I thought maybe it ran along the southern perimeter.
Right, yeah, yeah. And had it, I mean, walkability, you know, usability for the neighborhoods, everything is absolutely imperative for the lifetime success of a, of a development like this. So, you know, we've looked at every single option in order to try and maximize the benefits of the community. Of course, this site, I've owned it for 15 years or something like that, and have designed a multitude of various potential uses on it, have gone through city councils in the past and gotten to the point of signing plats, and it's like, I don't like it. This one here is, is moving forward, so, providing it's approved by you folks, of course.
Are you looking at this primarily as senior housing?
The twin home project will be opened up to the entire community, of course. They are single-level, 1,200-square-foot, barrier-free units. They all have front porches on them, they're very neighborhood-friendly. The success of the project in Sheridan of this nature, you know, the, I think there's 40% of the owners in there are seniors. In fact, I ran into one of the ladies that's 97 years old, and she just loves it, so, you know, it's, it's very conducive for aging populations.
Thank you.
Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and you may have covered this, Mr. Grimshaw, but what is the plan for the large square piece on the upper left-hand corner?
The large square piece in the upper left-hand corner, that is a multifamily?
Oh, that is the multifamily.
That I've, I've set aside for a project, yes.
I thought of a question when Councilman Hopkins was, was talking to you. Does that, because it's over the 750 feet maximum length for a street, and I understand that you've, you've had your autocad out and you've been working on this for decades, but does that, does that have to be at that place, or can you move it down?
Um...
Does it have to divide equally?
Yeah, in order to, in order to fit the twin homes, which I've got a, I've got an overview here of the, the site with the twin homes on it, if you'd like to actually see how they, they fit, I don't know if you can do that with a...
The manager can put it up?
I don't know if you can put that up on your screen or not, but... So the way those twin homes are positioned in there, it literally capitalizes and maximizes every square foot of those lots, affording the, the maximum balance of each lot to move the street forward, which we've worked in multiple ways of trying to do so. Those lots to the south, it makes them just too expensive.
Right.
And then, of course, we lose an additional two lots by moving that street south to, to try and accommodate that additional 84 feet, or 64 feet, or whatever it is. And of course, that's like the distance from corner to corner of this building here, or this room. So it's a minimal amount. It's real, it's something that needs to be mitigated and approved by you folks, but all in all, it's, it's, this is, this is the most efficient use of this site, maximizing every foot to its optimum.
And just to add a comment, if you're, if you're going to build homes, a really good business model is to have everything on one level.
Absolutely.
That's the wave of the future, man.
That is not necessarily the wave of everybody's future, but as far as myself and as far as my developments are concerned, I house a lot of seniors throughout the community and throughout the state, of course. And, you know, the baby booming popul, baby boomer population is growing at the rate of 10,000 people a day across the country, so the need of more accessible, user-friendly, aging population housing is imperative in order to try and help accommodate those that...
Okay. Any more questions or comments?
Yeah.
Councilman Haley.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Grimshaw, thank you. Recently, before this council, we had a developer request a zone change from C2 because loans were difficult to obtain for housing units because they could not get comparables of home units in C2. Have you anticipated that? Because it seems to me you're leaving this zoned as C2.
That is correct.
Could, is that some, I mean, or do you foresee coming back to the council with a request for a zone change?
Absolutely not. I have spoken with the appraisers, and there is no issue in that regard whatsoever. In some of the effects of other developments potentially, they just don't see any issue with it, so I don't know if that's one specific appraiser that has been consulted or what the case may be, but financing, not an issue, both for, on the development side and, and the future sale side with that zoning in place. Each of the adjoining units will be a comp for the next unit up the line, so this specific development in itself will primarily be the comp for, for the other units, for the simple fact that they're the exact units in style and design. And I don't believe that there's any other units of this style and design in the community. There are larger twin homes, of course, but nothing that's, that's scaled down to this size that some, that is, that is as affordable as these units will be.
Okay. Okay. Councilman Powell.
Mr. Grimshaw, I know we know, well, we know obviously that this is uncertain what will happen with the school property, but can you anticipate any kind of development that could occur to the east where you would look back and say, I wish I'd built a road for those folks?
No. I have looked at that property, and we've, you know, looked at a couple different options. What could come off of Central Drive is a road down in, intersections to the left and the right, if the school was to stay... the right, if the school was to stay in place, and then lots could be developed with cul-de-sacs at each end of that area without affecting our property and development itself. If the row, if the, if the school building was scraped, then Central Drive could go straight through, and developments on the east and the west of that Central Drive corridor could still take place, so with access to center, Casper Street and the south side of Central Drive.
Okay. Any more? Oh, Keneen.
Sorry. As part of our senior boomer study, we have a subcommittee on senior housing, and so what Mr. Grimshaw is proposing is already kind of meeting some of the, I guess, exciting opportunities that this group is identifying. And so last week in our meeting, we wanted to potentially put together not rules, but suggestions on how to make housing more friendly for seniors, and so we delegated that to Mr. Collins, because I think he missed that meeting. You have homework. But that meeting that we were hoping you might be able to attend, January nineteenth at three o'clock?
Mm-hmm.
Just going to plug that out there since you're here. But your project's exciting, so I think a pathway works just fine, and I'd love to move it forward.
Yes. And, you know, and I've got, I've got the need study that I had commissioned independently as well, and I'd be more than happy to share that with your group and the city as well. I mean, as a whole, it's.
Okay. Counselman Humphrey, remember that, he offered his study. Okay. Any more questions, comments? Thank you, sir.
And of course, that study is specifically for, for my development.
Right, right.
It reflects the need of the community overall, but isn't, isn't a broad-based community study that indicates other areas of potential opportunities and that sort of thing. It's just specifically for this site.
Right. But we can attribute having a study done to.
That's correct.
Due diligence.
Yes, yes. And you can, you can pull, pull information out in all sorts of ways, and of course, the Wyoming Community Development Authority has an extensive need study that they commission, and that will be coming out in January, I believe, for the end of year 2016.
Okay. One more question?
Certainly.
So is coming down here on a day like this confirming the belief that most people in Sheridan have about what life is like in Casper, Wyoming?
I've had a house here for sixteen years, so.
Oh, okay.
I drove down, I drove down, let's see, I was in the office, I guess, what, today's I was in the office yesterday in Sheridan and drove down last night. Vehicles on both sides of the road.
Yeah.
It was horrendous, horrendous.
Well, I'm glad you made it.
Yeah. Yeah, if the gates aren't closed, I'm going through.
That's a Wyoming driver right there.
That's a Wyoming driver, yeah.
Any more questions, comments? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
This time I would ask anyone else to speak in favor of the issues involving fairgrounds, home addition. Please approach the lectern, stand and be recognized, approach and be recognized. Okay. This time I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issues involving the fairgrounds, home addition, please approach the lectern. People speak in opposition. There being no others to speak either for or against the issue of the fairgrounds, home addition, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance approving the fairgrounds, home addition subdivision agreement and the vacation and replac creating fairgrounds, home addition comprising five-point-five-seven acres, more or less.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read.
Mr. Mayor?
Certainly.
To move that the council waived the residential block length requirement, and so that the owner shall construct an eight-foot mid-block pedestrian pathway within a fifteen-foot easement.
Yeah.
That's premature.
Point of order.
Yeah.
We need to get the ordinance on the table first.
Right.
And then you may entertain the motion.
Right.
Okay.
Right now, all we gotta do is get it on the table.
So moved.
Seconded. Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Discussion.
Along similar lines. I guess I would like to vote to approve this thing with conditions two through six. I think removing, removing two townhomes is pretty much in opposition to what we found on the boomer study. We need this kind of housing, and if that won't affect the construction of this project, I guess I'd like to see them work with staff to try and put a walkway in the best place, even though we're guessing no matter where we put it. But I just think it's a good idea to put it in now, and then the guy that comes and buys the property next door is going to be under pressure to hook up to a walkway.
My parliamentary procedure just unraveled. You're moving to amend?
That's a discussion.
Okay, yes.
I would like to.
All right. But we're not making any motions right now, we're just discussing. Okay, phew, cut out. More comments?
So in the matter of discussion, I think it's a reasonable request by the developer that the council waived the residential block requirements and put a pathway in the location that was presented on this diagram, which is up before us. And that's what I would like to support this evening.
Okay. Anyone else? Counselman Powell.
Your honor, thank you. I'm just conflicted, because I've been involved in these discussions before where we've made an exception to a rule that's been in place and has been workable. Mr. Collins says that we prefer the streets to be actually much shorter, the street length to be shorter than seven-hundred-and-fifty, and I just worry about these things from a precedent standpoint, because we've seen that happen before, where we make an exception like this and someone comes back with another proposal and says, you did it for him, why won't you do it for me? And so I'm not, I'm not opposed, but I'm concerned, and I think we should think very seriously before we make exceptions. And I realize planning and zoning sort of dropped this in our lap, and it may work out just fine with the path, but this, the uncertainty of what's going to happen to the east, let's just say it troubles me.
Counselman Johnson.
I guess my response to that would be that, you know, council does have the discretion to make exceptions, and all these are a case-by-case basis, that's why we have public hearings. And so I would think that this is one, that an exception would be warranted. Again, I don't think it's a precedent issue, we have that discretion, and there's a reason we have public hearings.
Vice Mayor Kathy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the liaison to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I was actually at, I was the one sitting in the very back of the room at Planning and Zoning the other night. But the option two, if I recall correctly, died for lack of second on the motion, so it never really did come to a vote, per se. The item one was chosen primarily betting on the come, hoping that the school property would be scraped and more residential put in. So you're, so that was kind of where they were coming from, which really says, are we hoping, and how can we shove or push that piece of property to become residential development versus a community center, some other type of a commercial entity, which if the property isn't scraped, it really becomes a road to a parking lot, which, that's, that's the other side of the discussion, and for nothing more than to try to give a perspective of how planning and zoning was thinking and why they passed it, or the impression that I got from planning and zoning, and was really to why they preferred option one, was hoping that the school property would become a residential versus a commercial development. So, just as a perspective to my take on what I heard at the planning and zoning meeting.
Very good. Any more questions, comments, discussion? Shall we?
And one further point is that actually, at one point, because they just wanted to, here you go, council, and not even really make a recommendation either way, and so I think planning and zoning was pushed to, you need to make a recommendation to council. Doesn't matter which one, but just, you need to make a recommendation. And so they chose one as opposed to two.
My follow-up comment. I'm going to go ahead and vote for the, the walkway, mainly because I think it's just an extreme imposition to have, have the developer lose two lots, in, without, without any certainty about whether this road will be needed.
Counselman Hopkins.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose an amendment to include option two through six in this, to include the walkway, and for this instance, give up on the street. So that's an amendment. So I guess we got to vote on that first, is that correct?
Well, I got to ask for them first, and then we can go on that. We're still in our discussion phase. Are we complete with our discussion phase? Counsel? Okay. Amendments.
The amendment would be to include conditions two through six, in disregard condition one.
Okay. And no entertainment of tabling this?
I'll second the Councilman Hopkins' motion.
Hopkins moved for amendment to include options two through six. Motion seconded by Councilman Johnson. We're voting on that first.
And you can call for discussion on the motion to amend.
Okay. Does everyone understand the amendment options? Okay. So do we need no more discussion?
The option, thank you, your honor, the option to table is there, but I don't know that we'll get new information. I think sooner or later we have to decide, and I guess I'm of a mind to decide tonight, now that I've heard all of this.
Okay, so, so we're going to go with the amendment?
We're voting on the amendment.
Yeah.
And, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the public's information, option two through six describes the pathway, whereas option one describes a road, and council is considering the pathway as the preferred option.
Okay. So let's vote on that amendment to include options two through six. We're voting on that right now. Voting on the amendment. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote on the amendment.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Okay, so for the original motion to approve on first reading, we're going to vote on that now. Ready? Please cast your vote.
Is that right? As amended. It'll be as amended.
Okay, as amended. Okay, got it. So we didn't need to vote that second time. All right. So would you please announce the vote again?
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Motion as amended, passed. Got it. At some point, we're going to make this look easy, guys. Iteration of the next items will be by ordinance. Please read the consent ordinances on third reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change of Lot One of lots one through ten of Eastward Heights Three located at twenty-three-hundred East Fifteenth Street in the city of Casper, Wyoming. An ordinance approving a zone change of North Casper Edition, Block Twenty-two, lots one-ninety-nine through two-hundred, and tract adjacent to Lot Two-hundred located at seven-zero-two North Jefferson Street in the city of Casper, Wyoming.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on third reading the consent ordinances just read.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Powell. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item seven-eight-one, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the Casper Historic Preservation Commission annual report. Item seven-eight-two, a resolution authorizing employment agreement with Nicole Collier for provision of municipal court judge services. Item seven-eight-three, a resolution authorizing an amended employment agreement with Kara C. Fink for provisional municipal court judge services. Item seven-eight-four, a resolution authorizing a contract for professional services with W W C Engineering for professional services for the K Street Improvements Project. Item seven-eight-five, a resolution authorizing change order number one to the agreement with Shamrock Environmental Corporation for the North Flat River Restoration Project, Wyoming Boulevard Water Treatment Plant Site, excuse me. Item seventy-six, a resolution authorizing a procurement agreement with municipal treatment equipment for two PACS water system, water storage tank mixers. Item seventy-seven, a resolution authorizing amendment number one to the agreement with Wyoming Department of Transportation for the Transportation Alternatives Program-funded Robertson Road North Pathway Project. Item seven-eight-eight, a resolution authorizing amendment number one to the agreement with the Wyoming Department of Transportation for the Transportation Alternatives Program-funded School Walkability Project. Item seven-eight-nine, a resolution authorizing a contract for professional services with Rev Three Adventure for the production and promotion of the twenty-seventeen A R World Champion, Worlds Championship, formerly the Rev Three Cowboy Tough Adventure Race Event. Item ten-eight-seven, a resolution authorizing a lease agreement between the city of Casper and the Central Wyoming Senior Services, Inc. Item seven-eight-eleven, a resolution approving the fee categories as established by the Casper, Neutrona County Health Department, Environmental Health Division.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Humphrey. I'm giving it to you. I, I, I think it was booked. We're giving that one to you. Seconded by Councilman Humphrey.
It's as if I was never.
Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
Charlie?
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now consider minute action items. These are business items that do not require a resolution. Please read the consent minute action titles.
Item eight-eight-one, reappointing Randy Hine and Don Rutter, planning and zoning commissioners, to the Old Yellowstone District Advisory Committee. Item eight-eight-two, appointing Karihoe Briarly, Sean Hawk, and Tom Hailed to two-year terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty-eighteen, and Paul Meyer and Deborah Huber to one-year terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty-seventeen, on the Old Yellowstone District Advisory Committee. Item eight-eight-three, authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Wyoming Community Development Authority tax credit application for the renovation of the Eastward Court Apartments located at fourteen-thirty-seven South Missouri Avenue. Item eight-eight-four, authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of support for a Wyoming Community Development Authority tax credit application for the proposed Grand Mesa Apartments to be located at twenty-nine forty-one and twenty-nine forty-three Central Drive. Item eight-eight-five, appointing Adam Hall, Andrew B. Elston, and Zach Warner to the Contractors Board for three-year terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen. Item eight-eight-six, appointing Councilman-elect Todd Murphy and Chris Walsh to the Central Wyoming Regional Water System Joint Powers Board for a three-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen. Item eight-eight-seven, appointing Councilman-elect Chris Walsh to the College National Finals Rodeo Committee for a three-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen. Item eight-eight-eight, appointing Councilman-elect Amanda Huckabee to the Chamber of Commerce Committee, pardon me, Coordination Committee for a three-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty-nineteen.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Any abstentions or nay votes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually would be voting either an abstention or a nay vote, and I don't know which would be more appropriate, on eight, six, seven, and eight, because those are appointments for council members, and they have not been sworn in yet. And I feel that that should be done by the new council on the night of the third, once they have taken office. And that still winds up meeting the criteria to have them appointed by the first meetings that come up.
So, that would be a, a nay, because City Attorney Lubin says, "Our duty on council is to vote." So, unless there's a financial conflict...
Then I'll vote nay.
You, you vote no. Okay. So, what would...
Because I feel that's something that should be done by the next council.
All right. Those are nay votes on, on items?
Eight, eight-eight-six, eight-eight-seven, and eight-eight-eight.
Got that? Okay. Any other abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
The abstentions made by Councilman Kathy noted.
Actually, they were nay votes.
I'm sorry. Nay votes. Uh, motion pass.
Thank you. Now's time, we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we ask the following. Please state your name and address. Please understand that council will or may not respond to personnel matters. These will be referred to the city manager. I know you know this, Paul. Understand that questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by council. And presentations are five minutes. Welcome, Mr. Meyer.
Good evening, council. I'm Paul Meyer, eighteen-twelve Custer. I've been hiding for a couple of years. I'm back out of my hole. I just wanted to come down and say thank you to my former councilmates, and for the incoming council, and for all of you for your, your public service. I, I've seen a little, little bit of negativity here and a little there, and I, I just have nothing but respect for what every one of you do, and for the price you do it for. Mr. Pacheco, if I may, very quickly, I'm an addressee. This has just gotten stranger, our families. I did not know that Joe was your father, and we go so far back now. I mean, he remembers me as a janitor at Casper Auto Supply. It's just, it's just spooky a little bit. Mr. Hellie, I, I pronounced that right, highly. I, I pronounced that right, I hope, but I, I will, I'm sorry that I never got to serve with you. You were, you were a model, as I sat at home and watched these meetings and in all your decisions, and I, I just didn't disagree with, with anything you did. I, I so appreciate that. Mr. Johnson, same thing. For a gentleman that was out, outvoted me and, and, and is in my, a seat that I used to be in, I, I fully support and approve of almost every decision you've made. You, you do a heck of a job. Between you and, and Councilman Humphrey, um, you're the future of Casper. You know, the young people out here are the ones that will make a difference, and have made a difference, and will continue to, and, and I'm very, very impressed.
Thank you.
Mr. Kathy, I don't know what to say, Councilman Kathy. I, I've never met a man more dedicated to what he did over the last four years than you. I, I commented a week ago, by the way, that was, I, that's how feeble I've become. I thought that was a meeting. It was a pre-meeting, and I was an hour late for that, but, um, many times, as mayor and vice, I've heard Mr. Kathy being two-hundred-and-fifty miles away in a raging storm, needing to get to the meeting, and to, he never failed. I mean, as far as committee appointments and selections and attendance, your record is impeccable. I mean, you, you took the CNFR, uh, uh, an incoming councilman has some big shoes to fill. I don't believe, in my experience, you missed a meeting, you took all, your regional water appointment, you took these to a new level. Um, it kept all of us very well informed, and I have nothing but appreciation for the hard work you did. Mayor, you've been probably the most pleasant surprise that I've gotten in politics in the last four years. Your, your handling of some delicate situations, your, your demeanor, your sense of humor is, will be missed and missed deeply.
Thank you.
Isn't this five minutes about up now?
I'm just, I'm a cheerleader for, Mr. Powell.
My timer doesn't even say anything, so...
Councilman Powell, I, I just sit at home and relish our relationship. Charlie and myself, I, we served together for a couple of years on a leadership role, in a leadership role, and I can't think of a person that we agreed sometimes, we disagreed as many times as we agreed, but never once did we cross swords or have a harsh word or, uh, you know. I think our relationship was what politics needs to get back to, and I, I appreciate your service, and I'm glad you're back. Councilman Hopkins, met you at a library forum as a friend years ago. I, we, our paths had crossed through the parts stores and stuff, I think, but again, nothing but respect for the work you've done, and, um, and I'm glad that we'll see you for a few more years, too.
Thank you, Paul.
Mr. Councilman Miller, I, uh, same thing. I just wished I'd have the honor to sit back there and get to know you as a human being, but there's not one word you've said or one decision you've made that I would disagree with or, or would say anything about disagreeing with, so I appreciate your service and your integrity. Councilman Humphrey, we go so far back that, again, you are the future of, of our city, county, and state. You and your, you've been through some tough times, you've been through some good times, but you're still here, and you're doing a great, great job. I wish to commend all of you as a body for the hardest decision, I believe, you made was the manager replacement, and there is not a man in this region or the western United States that the shoe didn't fit as well as it fit the, the man you guys picked in these awful economic times. I cannot, there is not a per, you could've spent a million dollars on candidate searches, and it would've come down to this man to my left, and I, that's a hard call, and you guys made it, and I appreciate it. You're surrounded by a staff that is astounding, um, you've got the right leader in place. My business happens to turn a hundred years old this year, so I didn't want to say anything about it with this economic climate, because even a month ago, it's like, am I gonna reach a hundred years? We're gonna make it. I sell collision supplies, and guess what? We've gotten busy recently. I appreciate each and every one of you. I appreciate when we disagree, and I especially appreciate when we agree, so thank you for this opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Paul Meyer?
Good to see your smiling face again.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And thank you for those kind words. Anyone else wishing to address council, please approach and be recognized.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Stephen Schnell of six-twenty Kirk Avenue in Casper. As many of you know, I'm the executive director of the Science Zone here in downtown Casper. In twenty-fifteen, you were all tasked with the monumental decision of how to allocate all those one-cent funds, um, to all the different community programs that we have. And as a member of the nonprofit community, I sat in on many of the presentations, kept a watchful eye on the meetings and the process, um, and with so many viable, interesting, and worthwhile projects, you had to narrow them down considerably and make them all fit within the tight budget constraints that you had to, and it certainly wasn't a task that I wouldn't have wanted, wanted to do. But you made it work, and after your deliberations, meetings, and discussions, you supported many of Casper's nonprofits, including the Science Zone. And on behalf of the Science Zone, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to reach our next level and to allow us to bring in two highly enjoyed exhibits, Dinosaur Revolution, which, uh, took, uh, almost half of our entire space down at the Science Zone, and the most recent one, which was Design Zone, an interactive and technologically advanced exhibit. And for those two exhibits that we brought in, we saw about twenty thousand visitors, and those were families from all over Neutrona County, and also school groups from the Neutrona County School District as well. So, thank you all for the service to the, uh, the community and creating Casper, um, you know, a place that's wonderful to live, work, and play. So, thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Stephen Schnell? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address council, please stand and be recognized. Welcome, Mr. Zimmerley.
Good evening. Dale Zimmerley, thirty-thirty-five Bel Air Drive. Um, what Paul said about you, I, I enjoyed, and he, he hit the nail pretty much on the head. But I, Christmas is coming up, in just a few days, and, and Luke two, there's something in there that talks about all of you as government, um, officials. Luke two starts out, "In those days, Caesar Augustus declared that everyone throughout the empire should be enrolled in the tax list." That was part of God's plan. God's plan to get, so Jesus was born in Bethlehem, so his family had to move there because of government officials. So, know it or not, you guys are serving the Lord. Even if you don't like it, you're serving the Lord, because he has the master plan. And later on Luke two, it talks about the shepherds, and it says, "Nearby, the shepherds were living in the fields guarding their sheep at night. The Lord's angel stood before them. The Lord's glory shone around them, and they were terrified. The angel said, 'Don't be afraid. Look, I bring good news to you. Wonderful joyous news for all people. Your Savior is born today in David City. He is Christ the Lord. This is the sign for you. You will find a newborn baby wrapped snugly and lying in a manger. And suddenly, a great assembly of the heavenly forces was with the angel praising God. They said, 'Glory to God in heaven, and on earth, peace among those whom he favors.'" So often, at Christmas time, we think about the birth of Christ, but what's more important is Christ leaving heaven and coming here as a, as a baby that's, can't do anything for himself, but yet he came here, serving us. And without Christ, there's no way to heaven. And so, some people get confused about that. There's only two options, heaven or hell, when we die. And without Christ, it's hell, and that's a sad thing. So, when you want to think about a joyous celebration like the shepherds had, if you have Christ in your heart, then you can have joy. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Dale Zimmerley? Thank you. Merry Christmas, Dale.
You, too, sir.
And, and I don't mind serving the Lord. Anyone else wishing to address council, please approach the lectern.
Good evening, council. My name's Shannon Eli. I live at twenty-three eighty-two Sage Wood Avenue. Just like to give you one bit of thought for the new year coming up. In First Timothy one fifteen and sixteen, it says, "The saying is trustworthy and deserving of full acceptance that Christ Jesus came into the world to save sinners, of whom I am the foremost. But I receive mercy for thre, this reason, that me, as the foremost, Jesus Christ, might display his perfect patience as an example to those who were to believe in him, for eternal life." And thank you for your time.
Questions or comments for Shannon Eli? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address, address council, please approach the lectern. Anyone else? Okay. At this time, we ask council members to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest, and we are going to begin with Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I will apologize in advance, because I've been busy, and I wanted to also comment and explain a few of the things that were passed as part of our consent, uh, resolutions. Water board met today, and several of us were in attendance. The annual audit was presented to us, and the good news is that the regional water board's finances are in excellent shape, and, uh, the audit really had no significant recommendations. Uh, I'll let Councilman Kathy or Councilman Johnson or Mayor comment on that further if they choose to, but it was a positive meeting. Uh, there continue to be discussions about the liquor license laws, and I encourage everyone present to pay attention to what's going on in this area, because, uh, there have been, uh, some suggestions of some significant changes, uh, but there are many players involved, and, uh, there will be people affected, uh, in, in one direction or another, depending upon whether changes are made or what type of changes would be made. There are several bills before the legislature that are under consideration that will change our local, um, situation here regarding liquor licenses, hopefully for the better. But, uh, I suspect this will be a, uh, very serious topic in the next couple of years as we try to sort out how to, uh, balance economic development with the protection of property rights. The Conservation District also met this week and had their annual meeting, and, um, as I'm sure most, most people here know, we have been very concerned about, uh, pending potential EPA regulations that might, uh, require us to make some major upgrades to our wastewater treatment plant, um, uh, that would be very, very expensive for this community. And, uh, so our Conservation District has played an important role in trying to reduce the selenium levels, which is a naturally occurring mineral, uh, uh, heavy metal in our soils, uh, but every time water washes over that shale, more selenium gets into the river, and EPA is watching us very closely. And, uh, we are up for a reexamination in twenty-eighteen, uh, and we hope that those levels will continue to come down so that the EPA will say, "They're low enough, and it's safe, and you don't need to spend fifty million dollars on your wastewater treatment plant." Uh, the Conservation District, uh, helps us by working with federal grants to increase pivotative irrigation versus flood irrigation, uh, which is, and also to line our ditches, which reduces the contact with that shale formation as the water gets, goes to the river. The, the indications are that we are moving in the right direction, and that those levels are coming down. We also have a problem in Casper that we need to educate people about, is the more that water, uh, hits that shale and is pumped up through some pumps, the more selenium we add to the water as it passes through our system and ends up coming to the wastewater treatment plant, and so the levels are actually higher after it goes through Casper than before. And we need to figure out some ways to, uh, work on that problem so that we can have those levels come down, um, at the tail end, uh, which will, again, lessen the pressure on us to, uh, make those upgrades. What else did I do? The CADA, CADA board had their annual meeting, and, uh, CADA's really picking up a lot of steam, and they have, uh, uh, a, an aggressive program to, uh, work with existing businesses. Their basic job is to increase jobs, and, uh, they, um, they, this is a group that's very active, that the city helps fund, and, um, their, their whole goal is to work on economic development programs within our community, uh, both attracting new businesses, but also helping sustain and fill gaps in our, our current business array. What else do I want to talk about? The Wyoming Association of Municipalities, which is our representative group, uh, with the legislature, um, is going through some very significant changes, and, um, we will be working to help, help WHAM, uh, reconfigure itself with some, with some executive changes. Um, and that will have an impact on Casper, because who represents us in the legislature, and how well they do that affects our funding and affects the, uh, regulations, uh, that we work with. Let's see. I want to comment on a couple of other things. Embedded in our consent resolutions was the rebuilding of K Street. Uh, this council has at times been criticized, or the city as a whole has been criticized for ignoring North Casper. This is a major upgrade that will take place, uh, in, in that area of our city, and, uh, and I, and it's, it's going to be a very good thing for the people living in North Casper to see that major arterial, uh, basically rebuilt, and, uh, we, we got that moving tonight. The Platte River Restoration Project, anytime that is mentioned, I think we should comment on it. Uh, this is a long-range project, project that's going to have, uh, benefits to the city of Casper for the next fifty or eighty years. Uh, and, uh, all we did tonight was give them some time to, uh, put the project on hold so that they could plant the vegetation at the appropriate time next spring, where it has a better chance of taking hold. But that project is moving forward, and, uh, it's just a very exciting thing to see. The other thing I thought I'd mention is we approved these tank mixers for our, for our tanks, our water tanks, and concerns have been expressed about, are we really paying attention to the quality of our water delivery system? And here we are again, um, making some very needed changes to our systems so that the waters... safe, because if we don't deal with the stratification in those tanks by mixing it, the chlorine levels can go down, and it can be dangerous. And so, here we are, taking some proactive measures to make sure that that water system is operating safely. And then, just a small matter, I voted yes on the REV III as a separate matter, but I really do believe in the future that should come before the Community Promotions Program as, as do other, other similar events that we fund through a, an application process twice a year. And that, I, I believe in the future, that's how we should be handling the REV III.
Thank you. Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had, on Monday, we had an OYD meeting, and we welcomed some of the new members, some of whom are spending money in Old Yellowstone District to upgrade their business or build new businesses. And then, this morning, we had a Metro Planning Org, Policy Meeting, and we heard some, about some good work on perhaps modifying some of our bus routes in the near future. I think it looks like a good plan, and I hope we proceed with approving that plan. I think council has seen the plan, and the policy, Metro Planning Policy Organization has seen it, and they've got to move ahead with it. Other than that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Miller.
Thank you, your honor. I, I figure this will be the last full meeting of us outgoing council members will have to be out, not to be redundant in previous meetings. I just wanted to again say thanks for the council for putting their faith in me the past year and a half, and thanks to the citizens of Casper for supporting me throughout this whole time. And one of the things I do want to mention, and Arno, you had sent us an email about this, about legacy, and I was trying to think of like, well, I don't know, I don't know if I've been on here long enough to realize it, but we have made a few key decisions with that. And I do agree that the decision with VH was one of the big ones, in agreement with Mr. Meyer over here. So, I really do think that that was one of our key decisions. And I actually made two of the biggest decisions I made on council that first week. And after the first one, which I believe was a smoking issue, it was both Councilman Pacheco and myself, we had the flu the next day. And I, I thought I had come down with something terrible, and I made a bad decision, but it just ended up being a bug that went around, and I think we did do some good decision makings. And I also think that we left with a cohesive council, which I think is really important. And if there's one thing to ask of the new members, and I, I think things are going to go really well, but try to continue being cordial on council because I think that's the most important thing we could be doing moving forward as, as a city. And I have full faith that that's what's going to happen here. I, I think what we've got moving here is going to be a great thing, and I'm really excited to see a lot of these projects come into fruition. And the things I keep telling people about this is we're going to see a different downtown and Old Yellowstone, Old Yellowstone District here soon. I'm, I'm telling pretty much everyone that right now because I see it, we can all see it right now. And that's because a lot of the work that we've been doing, not just me, but this happened even before me. So, I, I think it's important to continue on some of that work, this, to see our, our city progress and develop. But, oh, there was one more thing, another thing I would like to ask the new council members to focus on, is the people who are the experts, they're right here. They, they, they have degrees and experience, trust in them. The, the city staff, I, I felt like was, was the, the biggest asset that I think that this group has to make decisions on this council. I, I feel like I, I walk into a work session not knowing much and feeling pretty good when I walk out of there because of the dedicated staff here. I'm not sure what it's like in other cities, but I've met, I think we've got a pretty darn good one, and all, from what all I can tell, we've got a best-in-class city staff here. And again, due to VH's management and leadership styles and leading that group. So anyways, I, I, I've appreciated my time on this council, and I wish the next iteration of this the best of luck in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, your honor.
Councilman Humphrey.
Thank you. I already touched a little bit on the Boomer Study and kind of the senior housing focus. I'll bring more information on that as we kind of progress, but really what I just wanted to say was the snow removal was fabulous. The wind is crazy, but I've seen lots of comments and heard lots of feedback that you guys nailed it, so thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Pacheco.
I don't know why that made me laugh, Scott, but I remember that. That was sick. Okay. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. Number one is, this, this inertia of this council, when I came on in 2014, it was a very fractured council. And what we did is we really came together to really work at that, and it may not always be evident by what's written in the paper or the sensationalism, sensationalism that's put out there. This council really came together, and it actually became a time when we could actually laugh together and get to know each other on a personal basis. And that, that's something that I'm going to cherish over the last two years, and that I hope that, that the other council members that are leaving will remember that, that we actually did what we set out to do two years ago is to, is to heal a fractured council. And, and so, just wanted to put that out there to make sure that they knew that's how we felt. Second, nothing, a lot of stuff's not reported in the sense of, of what we do and how we do that, and a lot of the time, it's not that we want to brag about what we do, but it's no, it's no secret that youth are, as a passion of mine and continue to be in the next two years. But I had the opportunity, my daughter goes to Verda James, and I had an opportunity to go to the Ameritown, the YO town. Had not gone to it since they had opened up, and I had a, just a wonderful time volunteering and helping out with that process, and continues to give me the hope of young people. And, and when I read the headlines and I do those things where we get down and, and get frustrated with people that are, can't get along, or, or the sensationalism that can be written on the bylines, when really in the, in the innocence of our young people, that that's where the hope lies. And was very taken back by how the young people worked together, how they talked and how they did that. And certainly is something that I'm going to continue to volunteer with and let them know that I wanted to help out with, and I'll be continuing to bring more information from that level, and continue to work with youth because that's really where our hope lies. And I'll be continuing to talk about that in the next, next term on that. So, appreciation goes out to the Boys and Girls Club and the Nitrona County School District who partnered to do that. And so, I was very, just a wonderful opportunity to see these young people put the time and effort in, and the teachers. So, bravo to them, and we'll be doing more volunteering for them. So, thank you.
Thank you. And for anyone who may, in future, be confused by the pronunciation of your name, generally, if a name comes from a German root, you pronounce the second vowel with a diphthong. So, if it's EI, you say I. If it's IE, you say E.
English lecture for today.
Just so they know. Go ahead.
But how did I know it was of German origin?
It sounds, it sounds different.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for calling my name a diphthong. And to you, Merry Christmas. I recently become aware that society is classifying people by whether they say Merry Christmas or Happy Holidays. And I want to say Merry Christmas to you all. And Happy Holidays. Both. Politics, come on. Our next council, our meeting, the councilmen elect will assume duties, and, and so, Mr. Mayor, respectfully, I can no longer kick this down the road. This, thank you.
I've had a sound cue at this.
It was, it was right there. I can't kick this can down the road. All right. I, I want to share, and I was, you know, also asked, you know, maybe what advice I would have, and I want, I have three things. First, for the incoming councilmen, treat every vote as if it were controversial. There's a reason that matters are put before this council and not completed by the staff. You need to prepare for every meeting and review the packets prepared by staff. Give thoughtful deliberation to their recommendations, but also give consideration to alternative ideas. Number two, take care of the city employees. Due to reduced revenues over the past two years, pay increases have not been forthcoming for the city employees. Remember that people work for the betterment of themselves financially, and if you don't provide the environment for financial security and improvement, the good employees of this city will seek it elsewhere. Number three, stay true to yourselves. Everyone will tell you what to do, and they'll tell you what you're doing wrong, and sometimes people will share what you're doing right, and that's appreciated. But just remember, you guys are voted in because people believed in your judgment and your abilities. So, with that, if you do these three things, Casper's future should be bright. It was an honor to serve this community in this capacity, and go Pokes.
Thank you. Councilman Johnson.
I was, I missed the regional water meeting today. I was in Sheridan performing honor guard services for a departed veteran, so I missed that meeting. So, I will get with Councilman Kathy or one of the other two and see what I missed. That's all I have.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Kathy.
I think Councilman Powell pretty well summed up the water board meeting, so.
Oh, okay. There you go.
You're pretty well caught up there. The one thing that I did notice today that I think is something that we need to stress to the public is I received an email about 9:30-ish this morning about snow removal on A Street between Jackson and Beverly. Now, the thing of it is, that's when that email was sent. I don't sit staring at my computer all day long as do most of the rest of us not do that either. We have jobs as well. If you have issues like this, because I didn't even see that email till 2:30-ish, I forwarded it on to City. City had received no phone calls about that issue. If you have issues with severe drifting and things like this, these need to be directed almost immediately to the city. There's a good possibility that instead of that not being plowed till 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock this afternoon, that could have happened well before noon today. So, please, don't always think you have to come here. There are other avenues to get things accomplished for the city to work properly and to be able to administer city services on a timely basis. So, please contact the departments and the people within the city. As has been stated by several people here, we have a great staff, and we have great people that are working for the city, and they actually, all of us, serve at your pleasure. And that's what we're interested in, is in serving the community. So, that's something that we, we need to strive for. The other thing, and I guess this may be my, my mayor minutes, so to speak, referring to the mayor's comments a week ago, but I caution people to be careful of Facebook and the news media. This council, and actually not this council, the previous council, because councils change every two years. So, the previous council was chastised for two years, 13 and 14, for being dysfunctional, always bickering, always complaining, always fighting. We have turned around the, this council the last two years, and we have tried to strive for civil discourse, which means you can disagree, but you don't need to be concerned if you're going to be punched in the face by another council member. So, that, and now, we are being chastised for moving to civil discourse even if there is disagreement, because the newspaper's goal is not to really report, it's to make headlines and sell papers. The city, the newspaper endorsed five of the six incumbents for reelection. Once four of them were defeated, suddenly, and this has all been since the election, these are the newspaper articles and editorials, and there's one two-and-a-half pager that I don't even have a copy of that has done nothing but trash council and city administration. That's wrong. They need to accurately report on what is going on here. Several times, we as council members have gotten calls from the media wanting to question what we're doing, why we're doing it, and the news reporters have not even read the documents they're referring to. I have told those reporters, "When you've read the document you want to quiz me on, come back and we can have some civil discussion about it." One of the main things that would be very helpful is if they would get a copy of the city handbook for council members, which is about this thick, and read it through. And you would understand that the thank you gift from the Zimmerleys and the church was a thank you gift, that there was no political basis for it, there was nothing in there about it, and that if you were to read it, in theory, we could have accepted up to $250 gift every day that we were in office here, and that does not break the code itself. Personally, I could not have done that from an ethical standpoint, but that's what's in the document. But the first thing that happened that Wednesday morning was a call to the city attorney to find out if that was legal. We need to get out there and do our own investigation and do our own research. Otherwise, we are going, and the news media will destroy good government. A good government is a government that actually is almost oblivious to the public because it runs well and you are not obstructing economic growth and the personal liberties that we have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope I was under the five minutes.
I wasn't timing you, but I'm writing down that, that last quote, "The news media will destroy good government." I probably, no, not going to do it. No, I was going to bash on the media just then.
You, you want some of my?
No, no, I was going to make some really good points about media bias, but I decided, no, not that important. Went to the regional water board meeting today, and I'm going to try this joke again. I have been waterboarded along with Steve, Kathy, and Councilman Johnson, and Councilman Powell. We've been waterboarded once a month for years.
Two for me.
Yeah, see?
Four years.
All right. At that water board meeting, after the torture was finished, Steve, Kathy, and I were presented plaques of appreciation because they, they appreciated our help, our input. And because of our attentions to detail, we are pretty good on a board. So, anything else going on? I don't think so. All right. Next meetings of the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, December 27th, in the council meetings, council's meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, January 3rd, 2017. And that, January 3rd, 2017, is when we transfer power. We are going to fulfill that critical test of democracy on the 3rd. Anyway, that meeting will be held at January 3rd, 2017, in the council chambers. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Whoa.
Give that to, give that to Vice Mayor.
Moved by Vice Mayor Kathy. Seconded by Councilman Hiley. Please cast your vote. Please record the vote.
Councilman Kathy voting nay, motion passes.
Meeting is adjourned.